Welcome to day two of submissions on our annual plan. We have had an apology from councillor Hall, an apology for lateness from councillor Newell, so I'll move that those be... and, well, the mayor's already in. So I'll move that we accept those apologies, seconded councillor Lord. All in favour?
Aye.
Clarried. All right, on to our first submitter for the day.
Just, my turn? Yep. So, good morning, everyone, and thank you for allowing us the time to speak here today. I'm going to take the submission as read, but probably just highlight a couple of points within there, if that's okay with people here, and then happy to take as many questions at the end as you like. We congratulate the council on the process that it's going through and that it is looking to engage at a much higher and deeper level across a number of facets throughout the council, so we congratulate Sue and her leadership team for getting out into the community to try to articulate all of that work that's out there. We see that in the proposed rates rises 5%, so that's higher than what was expected or what was planned at 4.5, and we'd just like to urge a bit of caution about that because we are aware that there are a number of projects outside of that figure already that have been put to council yesterday and more to come in the future, and what that effect on that number might actually be and how that would affect both households and business throughout the city. Because there are other rises as well, when we know, that we know, for example, regional council rates are going up, but also the cost of living and things like that. We're really aware about the, with the growth that we've had, the impact that has on the city, and particularly the work that's going to come up around the main arterial routes, but of course also the centre-city upgrade. What we do encourage there is a continued good and deep consultation on that, but also a cognizance and awareness of the effect that that will have on the productivity when we're planning those things, but also how that will affect parking and people's accessibility to different parts of the city and what we can do to alleviate that. And we stress that we'd really like to see a strong collaboration with all those other parties, NZTA, the Ataga Regional Council, about what that's going to look like and how we manage that so we can decrease the impact on people's lives and incomes during that time. So, as I say, that includes looking at the parking and what those effects are. Equally, ties into that quite closely is the centre-city bus loop. We support that, but would be really like to know a little bit more about that, particularly the numbers and the costs around that, understanding what that looks like, and a more detailed understanding about what that route might look like, and then actually planning that around what's going to happen with the main arterial route and the city centre upgrade so that we don't do things twice and that that's well articulated. Some other things there, there's been some conversations about marketing. We're really pleased that the review has happened with Enterprise Dunedin, and there are some good findings out of there, and we think that there's some good progress made already. We're aware that there is a process underway at the moment to appoint a new marketing person, so we look forward to that, and that's involved some good community consultation there. So I think there is a role when that person is in place to be able to actually have a look at the data in some depth and get some analysis, particularly around spend and what that looks like. And I think we need to be really aware about where, what is our capacity, what is the maximum we can cope with, because we know on some days we're not coping at the moment. We can't get people to attractions and things like that, so we need to have a look at our ebbs and flows and know that data pretty well. Again, we're also interested in making sure that we continue to work with the council around the living wage for contractors and for staff. Understanding what those numbers look like and mean for the city and the rates and for the workers and for the contractors is really important to our businesses so that they understand that tendering process pretty well when they go for it, so that'll be pretty important for us. Just another bit around the centre-city rebuild. We would urge at this stage, until we know what the numbers actually are, so whether there's going to be a re-costing of the main street that was done several years ago, I think the option was $60 million, what does that actually look like now? What is the actual number now? So we get an updated on the budget about what that might look like. But also, we just urge caution to talk about, around the talking of targeted rates and the fact that leading into that project, where we know that there's decreased foot traffic, there's decreased potential uptake in the shops, that that may put some businesses off in the meantime going into that area before that work is done. So we just urge that that doesn't happen as probably loudly as what could be done until we know the actual numbers and what the detail behind that actually is, and so that then we can understand that a whole lot better as we go through. So that would be great, but we really appreciate the engagement and the connection that has happened with that. We're looking to try to support as much engagement as we can so we can make informed decision-making about what's going to be best for that whole sector that sits in there. Thank you very much. Happy to take as many as you like.
I just wanted to ask you a wee bit, just thinking about the centre-city plan and your comments about be careful around the targeted rates. I'm sort of, as a person that received a lot of targeted rates over my life in the years, I sort of actually think they're quite a good idea, but I'm willing to listen and have the debate. But do you think that there will benefit, there will be benefits to those people that own the buildings, for example, up the centre-city, that would be the receiver of those targeted rates that would not outweigh the... Got an opinion about that?
Yes, so the first thing is we need to know the detail about what the cost of that targeted rate actually would be, so we're not saying we're for and against, because we don't have the information yet that actually tells us what that's going to be. There's no doubt that an area which receives some of that revitalisation can benefit from it, but they also have been paying rates on that section of the road and footpath for some period of time. Without a doubt, there needs to be the pipe work done, that cannot be, you know, that has to be done, so it makes sense to do it together. I think we just need to continue the conversation about what that is going to look like, but we also know that in the present time, when they're going to be reducing their income, as we've seen with other projects around the city lately, that can be quite a devastating effect and make some businesses to close. So I think we just need to keep quite a close conversation about what that looks like before getting emotional about what that actually looks like.
Yep, okay. The other question I've got is around pedestrianisation and slow streets and those sorts of things. We've had significant, I would say significant, there have been people ask us about pedestrianisation and slower streets and more open areas, you know, the type of things you see in Sydney and Melbourne and Brisbane and those places. And I'm just wondering, do you have any thoughts about how we should tackle that? Because I'm not against the idea, I just, I'm seeking advice. I want to know that if we do those things, we're not going to suddenly drive people away from those areas, and what are your thoughts?
Yeah, look, I think one of the key aspects to the consultation so far is trying to continue to make our main street a destination within itself, so having reasons for people to go there, for families and for shoppers, so it's more than just about retail, it's got to be more than that. But within, we've got to understand what that looks like for logistics, for parking, for disability parking, for getting goods and services to those areas, so we need to understand all those and have all of those parts in the mix. What we have to manage most importantly is while that work is being done, is how do we still create an environment where we create it as an attraction for people to attend, even though those sections of the street may be disrupted? So we create either events or we create other ways for people to access that quite quickly so it doesn't put them off, because what we do know is that when people have the opportunity to change their behaviours, sometimes they never go back to their original behaviours or preferences. So we want to minimise the disruption to that change by creating events or activities that will continue to draw groups in, because what we do know is that our main street is still quite different to most other places throughout the country. Retail in Dunedin is actually doing better per capita than other areas in the country as well, so we want to continue to maintain that as we go through things.
Councillor Benson-Pope.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just, I prefer that question that you raised about targeted rates. One of the, notice that it was made, obviously, but one of the considerations or suggestions in the discussion to date has been that, if such a rate were levied, if such a decision were made, it would be desirable not to actually levy it until the work had been completed. So that would dodge the issue you were talking about in terms of cash flow and disruption. Would that be an approach that you would welcome?
Look, I think it's something that needs to be added to the mix of that conversation. I think that sort of discussion, particularly during that disruptive phase, is one that would be much appreciated. I think it's also an understanding about how do we actually apply that rate or that targeted rate? Is it by square metre of frontage that the property owner has that then passes on to the business? Because remember, it is the property owner that will get targeted that then passes on. So how we, what is the process for actually doing it? What happens to those businesses that are on the eighth floor above that? We need to understand all of those complexities around it before we can actually then understand what that effect is going to be on each individual property owner and stroke business. So that's all part of the mix of the conversation that we have to have moving forward.
Councillor Vandervass.
Thank you. You've mentioned the issue of parking a number of times, and I'm sure you've had time to traverse the issue with your members. Do your members, do you think, agree with the mayor's statement, which was printed in the Taga Daily Times on the 31st of October last year, that council should set a goal of reducing car parks each year because of the benefits to public health and local businesses and move away from cars would deliver? Do your members agree with that kind of philosophy?
I haven't asked them that specific question. What I do know for many of our members is that a direct access to car parking close to their business has been in the past seen to be beneficial, so in other words, that they may get more people going into their shop potentially. It's about how we manage some of that parking as well, what is our turnover rate? So that's a really important part, because for some of those streets, we don't want people parking there for half a day, a day, or, for example, on Sundays when there's free parking and the staff go and park their cars there because it's nice and close. So we've got to have that management side of it as well. What we do know is that the population is increasing within the city. We know we haven't had that mode shift away from personal vehicles, where the majority of people are still driving one person to a vehicle and they're going to have to park somewhere. And we're seeing pressures elsewhere throughout the city, where they're trying to, like, if we look down at the harbour side, for example, there are many businesses that are finding it hard to get their transport, their transporters to be able to get close to their businesses so they can get goods on and off because there are a number of people parking in what can be their sites or had been what they thought were theirs, but they're not, they're public.
Have you had any feedback regarding parking for staff? You just mentioned staff, parking in George Street on a Sunday. Do you anticipate a worsening problem if those parks are not available anymore? And where do you think commuter parking should go, given that we're getting less of it currently?
It was really interesting, there was some, a strong debate, I'm not sure whether people saw it this morning, on the AM show around large cities and smaller cities and how we're comparing to Australia with infrastructure and transport, and Australia particularly in its mid-cities are, I suppose, creating more accessibility and spending per capita a whole lot more on their transport systems and a better uptake. One of the big issues we need to get across, I believe, as a city, is how do we start to think about our transport system and how do we get a mode shift? We don't want to decrease that productivity by being stuck in traffic, as we're starting to see now, but we know that that is going to take some time. That transition is going to take some time, but we have to lead that and lead it strongly. But there is still going to be a need for individual parking for cars, both for visitors and/or for workers. And how do we actually accommodate for both of those without affecting the other bits that are going on? So I think there is a whole piece of work that needs to be done around, particularly when we, you know, with the hospital rebuild, there's going to be a significant effect with that one-way system. How's that going to impact, where are people going to go? How do we start to get some of that shift that starts to happen? Because we have seen already, you know, in the last year with the amount of roadworks we've had, the significant impact that happens on traffic flow. So how can we manage some of that and lead some of that into a new space?
Thank you. And finally, you mentioned productivity being affected adversely by congestion. Do you have anything other than sort of anecdotal evidence of that? Is there any part of your organisation that actually looks at productivity and looks at the effects, for instance, of spending a lot more time in traffic jams?
Yeah, what we do know is that the, I suppose, the transportation time for people going to work and coming back from work has increased, particularly in that very small timeframe that we have around that five o'clock. I think now people are starting to look at how and when they work and doing that a little bit differently so they are least impacted as they can. Yes, it does affect productivity. You know, I can give one example of myself, I had a meeting at the university and usually it takes me five minutes to get back to my office. One day it took me 35 minutes because all of the one-way systems, they had works on them, there was work down at the, by the railway station, and everything got clogged up. Now, that is an effect that happens, because if you think about that for, let's say, those truck drivers or those transport people, they're on limited hours with their licences, of course, and that can have an impact on that distribution chain that goes through. I think, you know, with the change that could happen with the hospital, understanding what the parking is going to look like for that, how do we create guaranteed parking for those, I suppose, people who are going in there for services, so that it might be automated drivers or it might be a certain type of shared driving service where they might be electric, where they get a guaranteed park, so they happen in Christchurch now. That could be part of a solution to reduce some of that stuff or get that so people know exactly where they're going so they're not driving around four or five times around the block. But there's a, there's a whole lot that sits in there, but we do know that if you're in traffic longer, it's going to decrease the productivity, and we know that we pride ourselves on being a 10-minute city. You know, I think we're probably now 12-minute city.
Right, so you know that has an effect, but you don't actually have any quantifiable data on that?
I haven't got the dollar figure that would sit beside it now, but I'm sure that there'd be some there that we could put into place, yep.
Thank you.
Councillor O'Malley.
Thank you, Dougal. I've got two questions, one's the transport and the other one's consultation. So I'll start with the transport because it sort of follows in. Do you agree then that as we're going forward, there appears to be an increased use of single-vehicle movements and that's causing and it's coming with slowing down of the ability to move through the city? And that whenever we get a works, like the closing of the bridge at Dundas Street or any work on the one-way system, we're starting to see quite significant increases in travel time?
Yes, so I think, so to the first part of that question about increased use, I think there are more people that live in Dunedin, therefore we have more cars on the road. So I don't know whether there's increased use by the same number of people, but there are more people on the road. So yes, there is. I suppose the impact is quite significant. So another one that was quite recently, we had Stewart Street being redone, and then we had the other two main arterial routes going over the hill. All three of them were being done at once and the traffic snarled up right through the city. And so there's those sort of effects that go through with that side of things too. So you've got two factors there, increased number of people in the city bringing cars, and then we have the infrastructure needs, which we know are so important to be developed, like it might be the drainage, it might be the piping, all those sorts of things.
Yes, so it comes, it's no surprise to you that an NZTA audit found almost 40,000 car movements come through the Oval every day, and over 15,000 come down Portsmouth Drive now every day.
Yeah, and very few, from my understanding of those ones that come from south, very few of them, actually, I think there's only about 10 or 15% actually go right through the city, or might be less than that, go right through the city at the other end. So we need to understand those flows, which has been some really good work done by NZTA, and then it's understanding what that actually looks like, because the same is happening from the north, where they're coming in from the north but they're not going out through the south. So we need to understand those flows, because what we can see is people are coming in and then obviously going back out at the end of the day. So we need to make sure that we understand those and how we can alleviate some of that.
And then acknowledging that as we go forward with all of the projects that we're going, we're going to change all those flows, and I guess you touched on it, do you think then that, especially for the commute, especially for workers, that we're going to have to start addressing a mechanism of getting people into the city that's not necessarily just based on an individual driving, individual car coming in?
No, it's going to be a mixed use, there has to be a mixed-use model, that's for sure. And, you know, there's got to be solutions around that last kilometre of the journey, what that actually looks like. It'd be great if we can increase the people, the chance that they're walking, things like that, equally with tourists. We continually, you know, if a tourist says to us, and let's say they're from America, and they say, oh, you know, how far away is the Octagon? And we say, two blocks. Now, for us, that's six minutes walk, but two blocks to an American is half an hour. So there's a different terminology and understanding what that actually means when we start talking to people in those sorts of ways. So therefore, they are more likely to try to get a taxi or a bus or something like that. Either way, it's adding to that, walking can be a solution. You know, that's one of the conversations we're having about the hospital, and particularly when we have those 750 workers on site, how are we actually going to get all of them to site every day? Right? Because they're going to have tools, they're going to have all those things that they've got to take with them. How do we actually get them safely to site, but also so that it doesn't affect the other people who are travelling there? Equally with the logging trucks, we know there's going to be a massive increase in logging in the next five years. What is the route for that for our city to keep our pedestrians and our workers safe? And what does that actually look like? And then what effect is that having on our other roads apart from the NZTA-owned ones? And what is the future cost of that to the city? So there's a health and safety cost to people and the community, but there's also a dollar cost to what it means to upgrade and keep those roads on the go.
Cool. So from an annual plan submission and where we're going perspective, there's the connecting Dunedin committee meetings going on now, and now there's some governance representation at those committees. Would you like to see that activity be where the coordination of all of this could go? Because this is where NZTA, ORC and DCC sit in the same room.
Yeah, it's really, that's going to be a massively important piece of work, and I was really lucky to be part of the early stages of that, and we look forward to continuing to be part of that, because it's going to be important for businesses to understand how they are going to get goods and potentially services to their businesses and back out, because if there is a major change in those roadings, what is that actually going to mean for them for getting accessibility for those large trucks? Because at the moment, we've designed some of our bigger box retail stores, it's been designed around the one-way system, and we can get the big freight liners in and out of those facilities.
Cool. And now the other one is the consultation question, you've mentioned it in your written, but you didn't cover it in your verbal, is the proposed bridge to connect to the harbour side?
Yeah.
And consultation, and you saying here that there's been no further consultation since it was first announced. What would you like to see between now and the next announcement in terms of consultation? Like, what specifics do you want covered?
Yeah, look, there's been, obviously, there's been a lot of really good work happening behind the scenes, particularly around the provincial growth fund application and things like that. I think making sure that those businesses in the immediate and surrounding area understand what those conversations are about and what the effects on them could be. Equally, we know that the last time there was some work done on the Jedy Street overbridge, that, it sounds silly, but, you know, we've got a whole shunting yard that's happening underneath that area, which is continually working, and there are workers who are in those trains and working around that shunting yard. And last time, I understand that there was a near incident during that time where something fell off the bridge as it was being repaired, a tool, and it went through the cabin of one of the, one of the people who are working there. So we need to understand that so that people can plan ahead and understand, but also they can contribute some of their good ideas, because they live and work there every day. So I'd encourage people to understand it, but also know what the timeframe of what that build could be so that they can plan around that and ask them for any of their thoughts or ideas.
So one aspect would be you would like the consultation to be done in such a way that before something has gone too far and can't be reversed, there's been a question on what do you think about this so that it can be some...
Yeah, just keep people informed, because that's really important, because then they understand and then they can raise those questions as and when they need and want to, but also they understand what they're planning for and what that's going to look like. And that's both on this side, because we have very few east-west corridors within the city, and it's really important that we understand how that effect is going to go on for the city.
Councillor Wilson.
Thank you. I'm intrigued by your submission on the living wage, and I just want to pull that out a bit, and you've submitted on concerns about it in the past, and I just want to reflect the economic development strategy and see whether the chamber is still with it, where it's, the goals of the economic development strategy, the second one is an average of 10,000 extra income for each person requiring GDP per capita to rise by about 2.5% per annum. Are you still holding that that's something we should be aiming for?
Absolutely it is, and we've, we've never come out and said that we're against the living wage either, and I've continually said that here, we support that, but what we need to understand is how are businesses going to get there to understand what that looks like? So it can't just happen straight away, they need to have a plan and a process and they need to understand what that looks like. At a time when all the data that's coming out from ours and national and regional surveys are saying that future profitability is at its lowest level for some considerable time. So it's about managing all of those and putting a correct timeframe so businesses can adapt and increase their productivity and do those aspects so that then it can be rewarded without businesses going broke.
I get, and that's great, and I get all of that, but surely as a Chamber of Commerce, when you're the lowest paid generally spend all of their, 100% of their wages in the local economy, I think that's how it works, especially when you've acknowledged that the city's getting busier with more people and therefore, and we discussed it yesterday, the housing position is that rents are getting higher, that, I'm intrigued that that's the thing that you've targeted, and maybe it's because we mentioned it in the annual plan, rather than, I hope you're taking the bigger picture, that companies shouldn't be paying high director fees as well, because that's, that's part of the same...
I think, I think what we are saying here is we want to be part of the discussion about what the effect on the rate payer will be for having a living wage. It's not about whether the living wage is right or wrong, we're just, we just want to understand what that cost is to the rate payer. Not saying it's right or wrong, we're not entering into that debate. What we are saying is what is the cost effect to the rate payer?
Would you see that it would be a, if, I think I'm correct, that they generally spend 100% of their pay in the local economy, would that be a good thing for the chamber businesses generally?
Well, listen, there's a whole lot of elements...
At that end?
Look, there's a whole lot of elements to this around, you know, and there's all sorts of research when you read the articles about what that effect has on inflation, what that has on business, where, yes, people say they go and spend more in the cafes, but the cafes are then charging $8 for a coffee instead of $3.50 to be able to cover it. We have seen anecdotal evidence when these things have gone up, is that there are a decrease in the number of hours worked by part-time staff, right? Because of the cost going up, you would have known that with your cafe that you ran, sometimes that gets quite tough. And, you know, these are all factors, it's not just as simple as saying that because this is going to happen, that there's going to be more money spent, because we don't actually know that. It could be, for example, you know, when we have a targeted rate on the centre-city businesses, if that goes ahead, what is the cost on that to council? Because council owns a considerable amount of real estate in that area. So what is the dollar value that is going to affect the council of that decision? And what is that going to be? Is that going to be charged to rates? Or does that go straight towards the people in those businesses that are running within those environments? So those are the things that we need to understand.
Councillor Wylie.
Dougal, you made mention of the Martin Jenkins report and the significant growth visitor sector of the city's economy. How are we progressing in that in the view of the Chamber of Commerce?
Look, there's, it was great that a number of people had the opportunity to voice their opinion. Now we've got some decisions that have to be made out of that, and there's been some plans put together to try to move that stuff forward, particularly around some of the data collection and understanding of the data, but also around some of that destination. So, you know, there's a position which is, so the job description has been collaboratively put together, there's a panel has been selected around the destination manager, so there's some, there's some positives there. You know, if I was to say something, I think there's probably that that team could do with a little bit more resourcing, particularly during this phase where they're going to be putting some plans into place, there's a lot of work being done in that space, there's a lot more connectedness trying to happen. But I think once we get that destination person in there and we get the right person, hopefully that will drive and stimulate some of the growth that we need. But I think, going back to your point, is we need to understand in detail what the data actually means around international visitors and domestic visitors. One of the issues we face within New Zealand is the cost of travel within New Zealand is actually very high. There is an example given last, about three months ago, they did an analysis of... They did an analysis of an Auckland family going to the West Coast to go for a helicopter ride up to the glaciers or going to Melbourne and going for a helicopter ride over Melbourne. It was cheaper to fly to Melbourne and do that same trip than to travel in New Zealand. So we have a pricing issue within New Zealand, which is starting to put people off, both domestically and internationally because of the quality of what we can and don't offer. But it's also about people come to New Zealand because they want to meet New Zealanders, right? And that's where we have a great opportunity in this town because we are different to some of those major destination areas because you will still meet and talk and mingle with New Zealanders. And that's probably one of our greatest assets. And I think there's some great work starting to happen with the Regional Economic Development Plan, which could lead to some shared vision about what that destination actually looks like for our whole region, to get them in to stay longer in our whole region, because that's a benefit to the city and what that's going to look like. So how do we attract people, not just to Dunedin, but to our feeder areas?
So just to follow up on that, then you also, there's a comment about investing more in the city marketing, dollar-wise.
Yeah, look, and I think, I think there's an opportunity that we could look, we could do that. And I think there are always, I think what we need to understand is what are we actually trying to target? Because we don't want to be targeting those days or those times where we've got 6,000 visitors coming in off a boat because we can't get them to the places already. So it's about those shoulder seasons, it's about understanding where our ebbs and flows are. It's about targeting things like our conferencing and working with the university. So I think understanding that whole picture and what Terry and his team are doing out at the stadium, how does all that mix fit together to understand? And then we start to say, right, how are we going to start to market this stuff? And that may require more money at that stage. And how do we leverage more from the likes of, you know, tourism in New Zealand? How do we partner with the university and the polytech, all those sorts of elements that go with it? But, you know, look, I'd say that you're always competing against everybody else as well. And everybody's spending a lot of money in this space. And what we've got to make sure is that we understand who and what we're trying to deliver to the domestic market and the international market.
Thank you, Dougal.
Right, thanks very much, everyone. Appreciate your time.
You didn't really run too far over time. Go ahead.
Mr McGowan, you talked about capacity earlier. And I just wanted to explore that a little bit because we've heard various songs through yesterday about capacity. And it varies from organisation to organisation, perhaps. Any comments around that?
Yeah, look, I mean, it's always going to be difficult when, you know, we're going to have a larger amount of cruise ships, I understand, next year. And that creates, again, stresses and strains on infrastructure. So for example, how many bus drivers do we have? How many buses do we have? How do we actually make sure that that's done safely as well? So there's those constraints that we have from a physical capacity, as well as from how do we actually get people in and out. I think what we can see quite clearly is that the city is able to cope with large numbers. We've seen that over a number of periods of time where we have large events. A lot of them come from outside of the city. I think our average is somewhere about 60%, don't quote me exactly on that, but it's a higher number. So we have the capacity to do that. But what we could actually do is leverage those times where it's a little bit quieter to try to bring more people in during those times.
So you're talking the smoothing of seasonality?
Yeah.
You continue to do that?
Yeah, without a doubt. And, you know, we've lost a festival that happened during the June-July school holidays. That could have a significant effect on the city. And how do we look to grow that space as well? And how do we look to make sure that people know that we're still a great place to come during those times? I was just on a plane on Sunday coming down to Dunedin. And most of the plane was filled with young people coming to the University Orientation Week, University Poly Orientation Week, and they had a parent with them, at least one. Now, that's a great opportunity for our city to tell people what a great place it is, to get them to not only bring their precious children down, but for them to come and visit on more occasions. So we know the effect that the graduations have with the orientation week. So how do we continue to grow those sort of aspects? And it was great to see so many bright young faces looking so excited about coming to this place called Dunedin. I was sitting next to a young man who was, he had got a Pacifica scholarship to come down. The university asked him to come down. He was so excited to be here, to come and have an opportunity to come and look at somewhere different. And I had a great conversation with him on the plane. And he was truly excited about being down here for the next three days and looking to make it his place for the next five years. So let's hope he does it.
Thank you.
councillor Elder.
Thank you, Chair. Great to hear that story. I'm just talking about the new marketing person. And Norcom Barker had a concern that it was tending towards just marketing and not tourism expertise. Have you got any comment about that?
Well, yes, I do. I've been, I along with others have been part of a group that have put that job description together. And they included people from the tourism sector. There were a number of changes made to the original job description as a result of that consultation. And I'm actually sitting on the interview panel. So I think from my, and my organisation's perspective, we feel that we've been fully engaged in it. And now it's up to the org, those people who are on that panel, to choose the appropriate person or not to appoint and to go back to market. But then to make sure, like with any job, is that people are held accountable for what they are there to deliver.
Thank you for that.
No more questions, councillors? In that case, Dougal, you are free to go. Thank you for your input.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Our next submitter is Michelle Reddy. Welcome to the table.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Kiara. I'm Michelle Reddy. And firstly, I'd like to thank the DCC for giving South Dunedin, the South Dunedin Community Network, a place-based funding grant. Some of this money has gone into appointing myself as the South Dunedin community facilitator. So in this role, our main co-papa is to make sure that our work and any initiatives that are undertaken in South Dunedin are community-led, that a variety of different people have been consulted, especially those who do not usually have a voice. We also wish to support South Dunedin businesses and empower residents to engage fully with their communities. Bearing that in mind, I'm here to speak mainly on one issue today. So my submission itself covered a number of topics, including more playgrounds, flooding and accessibility. I know that others are going to be speaking to these topics. So I'd like to talk mainly about cleaning up the main streets, especially King Edward Street. King Edward Street is one of the heartlines for business in South Dunedin. It is one of the main streets that people think of when they think of South Dunedin. I think that's my PowerPoint up there. I have some photos if that could be opened. Oh, wait, I see, I see what I'm supposed to do. Okay, so I've got some photos I took actually yesterday. And these are photos from King Edward Street. The gardens are barren, at times filled with rubbish. A number of people don't like the street plaques. The Kofai idea is beautiful, but the rusted grey look really brings the whole area down. Yes, we have gardens, but they don't actually add any value to the street. In fact, many people have been saying that the state of the gardens actually makes the street look worse. And if you see at this photo, there's actually cigarette packets and all sorts of cigarette tips and rubbish just floating around. And this is Lawn Street, which is often occupied by kids, young mothers, and literally everyone on all walks of life, from all walks of life. And it's really important to note that public space in South Dunedin is really very overutilized as well. But it's not up to standard. So business owners on King Edward Street are especially discouraged. Many of them want to get stuck in and clean up the gardens, but face barriers from council. Business owners also have commented that they feel that South Dunedin's business sector is an afterthought to the DCC, rather than being seen as an asset and worth being invested into. We all know that South Dunedin is key to business overall in Dunedin. There are a number of essential assets that live here. If we don't want to see people fixing up the garden beds by the road, which the DCC has outlined as a health and safety hazard, then a well-planned approach to tidying up South Dunedin and upgrading our public space needs to be put into place. I've been working as community facilitator for almost five months, which isn't very long. In this time, we held a community hui with 130 participants. I have been talking to a number of diverse groups. And while our community consultation, which we've named Community Conversations, is just kicking off, there are a number of themes already emerging. South Dunedin people want, they want gardens, they want fruit trees, they want plants that they can utilize. They want green spaces and they want the celebration of the unique history of South Dunedin. They want parks, and most of all people are talking about accessibility. And I believe that these all can be integrated into an exciting project for South Dunedin. I have to emphasize the importance of including local business and a diverse range of people if we are to clean and revitalize the streets of South Dunedin. If we are to replant the gardens and create green spaces, people must feel a sense of ownership and inclusion in order for it to be successful and meaningful to our community. Otherwise, these gardens and public spaces will likely fall into ruin again. If you visit King Edward Street in the middle of the day, it's a bustling hub for people of all walks of life, people with disabilities, people literally living on the street, business owners, kids, people of all socioeconomic backgrounds. Accessibility needs to be considered for everyone. South Dunedin has a spirit of resilience, diversity and warmth. South Dunedin has a long history of artistry and creativity. Our people deserve streets that reflect this. So I welcome any comments or questions or insights on how we can best achieve this together. Thank you.
councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr Jimon. Good to meet you. Thanks for coming. And my question's at a higher level, I guess, and it's around the support for the, for place-based groups, for community groups. And the intention of that was to try and strike a balance between enabling communities to get on and do the work for themselves, but also supporting them without, supporting them without telling them what to do in a paternalistic fashion. So do you have any comments to make on how you think that balance has been struck at the moment?
I think in South Dunedin, we're really lucky that we have a really good relationship with Rachel Elder. And most workers from DCC want to come in and work with us, which is amazing. I haven't actually seen that in the past with my past job, so that's been really great. So they are here to listen, but we often get comments like, oh, we don't actually make the decisions. We can listen to you and we can take this back. But whether our comments get passed on to a higher level is something that we're not sure about. So we're not really sure where our work is going at this point. So I guess any clarity over that process would be really helpful for us to know that when we talk to council, where is that actually going? And what is our feedback going to do in the future?
Thank you. That's really helpful feedback that we can deal with separate to this. But do you, do you feel like the community is currently owning that process? The process of the work that you're doing as opposed to being a council community development contractor?
Oh, it's really interesting because when I first entered the job, there was this kind of disapproval of what I was doing. People thought that the DCC were essentially telling us what to do. So it took a lot of community building and me going out and networking to get people to understand that this is very community-led, really informing them about our plans. And they have come on board. It's taken a lot of building of relationships because there is that sense in South Dunedin of distrust towards the DCC. But our, I guess our work is to be that bridge because we really want to work with the DCC. We think that this is amazing, amazing work that you're doing, especially around funding. I know that flooding and I know that that's going to take a lot of time. But it's just communicating to the public about, and being really straight up about these issues because they actually don't understand why the flooding, why this and why this hasn't, why that hasn't happened or why hasn't that been fixed yet. So they feel out of the loop. So, but now as we're going forward, I've put to the community that we want to be community-led. So we're going to have these series of workshops. And I'm actively going out in the community, looking for people who haven't been consulted. Because in South Dunedin, some people have this idea that we've been overconsulted. However, it is a very small percentage of people in South Dunedin, mostly stakeholders, but not the people themselves. So when we start asking these questions and building relationships, they are coming on board. They are seeing that we're not there to tell them what to do. And as we do our research and hold these workshops, hopefully we'll come up with a plan that is essentially community-led. We haven't directed those pathways into those goals and where we're going to go. So that's where we're at the moment. So we're still relationship-building, but it's really exciting times for us.
Thank you for doing the work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
councillor O'Malley.
Didn't think I'd come to the top of the queue that fast. Thanks for your presentation. I've just got two questions. One is around that over-consultation comment and also on King Edward Street itself.
Sure.
Is it, some of the, some of the comments that others have made about the over-consultation idea is that they have been talked to and talked, and they've talked back a lot and then haven't really seen much happen? Is that what they're saying when they're saying over-consulted?
Yes, so they're saying that these questions have been asked already, but what's been done with it? Where is all the feedback from these questions that have been asked to the community by the DCC, but also other groups? Like what has happened to that? I've been actively trying to look for that. I haven't found anything. But it would be so useful for us to figure out where the research is. Because I know the DCC has worked with South Dunedin, done community consultation. But where is all that information being kept? We don't know what's been done with it. So there is an aspect of that with stakeholders. They feel like they've been asked too many times. But then there's the everyday people who feel like they've never been asked. So it's trying to find that balance. And if we could have the records where people have already been asked, especially stakeholders, then we don't have to go back and ask them and they get really riled up and aggravated.
Or a way of showing what's come from that consultation so that they can understand where they sit on that process?
Yeah.
Thanks. And then on the other one, do you think that in the eyes of investment of infrastructure and amenity spends that say King Edward Street from McCandrew Road to Cargill's Corner
Right.
would be sort of like the business retail district of South Dunedin? I mean, there's other areas there. But I mean, if you're comparing that to say George Street from Albany Street to the Octagon or Princess Street from the Octagon down to say Police Street, would that be sort of, same sort of density of activities?
I would say that the space is used differently. Because there's so many people with learning disabilities, young mothers and things, people are actually using that space in a different way. They're actually coming in to hang out in the space and be safe. That might be like a safe space for them that they don't have wherever they come from. While the space in say George Street is used more as a people come in to shop and then they leave sort of thing. Well, in South Dunedin, it's a very different kind of utility that's going on there.
Okay.
And I think that could really be invested into and is essential to be invested into because people deserve places that are safe, which I guess the library build is really exciting for us because that will give us a space for all sorts of people to just chill out. But yeah, I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
So I guess my question is, it's a parity question. Do you think that the amount of money that's going into King Edward Street is the same proportionally in terms of outcomes and community impact as is proposed to go with the George and Princess Street?
Hmm, that's a, I think...
Or would you like, I guess my question is, would you like it elevated?
Yes.
Because I think the answer is, it's obviously not because we've got the money budgeted differently. Would you like King Edward Street to be elevated into the consciousness of the council?
Absolutely.
To the same level as those streets?
Absolutely, absolutely. I think it's essential. And it will really help business flourish there. I mean, you'd walk down the street, there's so many empty storefronts, but people want shops. People want things that, you know, places where they can actually spend money to an extent where it's actually affordable for them. Because South Dunedin, I guess the socioeconomic situation's a bit different. But if we have those stores being taken up by, say, artists or other types of people who don't charge like $100 for a piece of, for a photo or something. You know, like we have to think about what kind of people, what people want out of that area and what they need.
But the city at least can control the streetscape.
We'd love that. Like, it would just be so amazing to have a green space out there because it will be used, it will absolutely be used.
councillor Elder.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for that passionate presentation. Lawn Street and King Edward Street are really, really busy places. Anyone going down there will see that. And lots and lots of people hang out in Lawn Street. So what do you think Lawn Street and the state of Lawn Street and the state of King Edward Street tells the people of South Dunedin? tells the people of South Dunedin?
Well, if you talk to anyone in South Dunedin and the business owners, they feel like they've been left behind. They feel like their business is not important to the city. And they feel like they're just, there's this idea in South Dunedin that they're just not part of moving forward in Dunedin that because of the flooding, we're not going to invest any more money there, there's no point. But there's so many people who live there, there's so many people who call that place home. And there's no way that we're all going to move 20,000 people or however many people live there to somewhere else. It's going to be really difficult. So for them, it's like, well, are people giving up on us? Is the council literally giving up on us because of this flooding issue?
You mentioned something else, and that is why people go to the street in South Dunedin.
Yeah.
And you mentioned that it wasn't just for shopping.
No.
So why else do people go to, say, Lawn Street, George Street, et cetera? Or King Edward Street, sorry?
Do you see a lot of people, especially like young mothers, who obviously don't have anywhere else to take their children to playgrounds and things? And playgrounds in South Dunedin aren't really well-known. Or let's say you're a young mother and you don't have anywhere to go except you've got a stroller and you can walk. So the closest place you're going to go to is probably Lawn Street where there's, it's pretty sad. It's pretty sad. What are your kids going to play with? Like those cubes? So there's that. And there's people with learning disabilities who literally just catch up on the street, hang out on those benches, and they're there all day. Some people have really set routines where they're out on the street and then they go home. And that's their way of living. That's what brings them joy. So that's what we're talking about in terms of the difference, that revitalising that space will actually really lift the community.
So you were saying that Lawn Street and King Edward Street is actually a hangout space where people meet, socialise and spend a lot of time?
Yeah. They may not spend as much money as would like, but that doesn't mean that they're not worthy of having a beautiful space where they hang out because we can't just say people with disabilities, well, you don't matter because you don't spend heaps of money down here. Like that's not how we probably want society to look like. So, yeah, so I think if we're going to raise South Dunedin as a busy revitalised community, it would be such a great investment. And to also signal to them that, hey, we're thinking about you and you matter.
Cool. Thank you. I love seeing the people in Lawn Street. There's so many people there all the time.
councillor Gary.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle, for your presentation. I'm just trying to marry up your comments and understand your comments in relation to presentations we've had from Eleanor Doig recently. So do you have any comment about that at all? Because she talked about how, what's the investment we're making in the hub, the library, that people did feel that we're investing in the area, but I'm hearing something quite different from you. Could you comment on that at all, please?
Sure. So as we know, it's taken a very long time for that library to happen. And just putting a library there isn't going to automatically solve people's, you know, kind of resentment towards the DCC. I mean, it's a great idea and people are on board. But they're like, oh, you know, you've bought the building site. How long is it going to take for this library to actually be there in another sense? Because it's taken 30 years for that to happen. So it's like tangible things, like just revitalising the gardens.
Sorry, if you misunderstood my question. My question was, we had a comment from Eleanor, who's working in the area, you're working in the area, but the two don't line up. And I'm just wondering, are you talking to different groups or?
No, Eleanor's my boss.
Right.
So she, if she was here, she would also talk about that there has been a bit of uplift from the community library actually going to happen. But there is still need and there is still a feeling of, we're still being left behind. Because it has been, it has taken that long. And there has been comments like, why would South Dunedin need a library? What would they do there? Are they really deserving? Like, these are comments that we've heard in the past. And just by saying that we're going to put a library there, is it going to fix that relationship? Yeah. So a really easy way would be to just to clean up King Edward Street. Compared to the long-term time that it's going to take to put a library there, we don't know how long it's going to take. And we're guessing it's going to take a number of years to actually get that running going. So.
councillor Elder.
Just following on from Chris and Gary's question is, do you see a mismatch between the stakeholder groups and NGOs all being involved in that? And the actual community, the people in the community? And do you think that's part of the problem when it comes to reception?
Yes, there is a difference between stakeholders and difference between people who live in South Dunedin and don't necessarily have a voice at those top levels and are going to those high-level meetings and can talk to the DCC. Like there is definitely a difference in opinion. And of course there is. I mean, the people who are stakeholders, they are more well-off than the people that we're trying to talk to. I mean, the people we are talking to are living day by day. Stakeholders and NGOs, I mean, we're all educated. We all have a good income. We can all survive. But the people of South Dunedin, there are so many people who are just living day to day. And just little things, I think, would really support them, getting like this community is valued and resourced properly for them.
Cool. Thank you for that because, yeah, I see that as a bit of a mismatch.
councillor O'Malley.
Actually, just want to follow up on that very last comment again. Do you think perhaps, as councillor Hawkins suggested, the place-based community groups can fulfil some of those roles?
I hope so.
Because you lower the barrier effectively to getting involved.
So I guess it would just depend on who you've got in these positions because my own way of working with a community is very much grassroots, intersectional, talk to everyone. But there might be that same kind of top-down approach where you're still not getting the people who are actually living in the community having a voice. So I guess for myself, I can say that we are trying our best to approach everyday South Dunedin people rather than NGOs and, yeah, stakeholders because they've already been asked. But we would like to figure out where all that information is being kept so we don't have to ask them again.
Yeah. There's a logistic, would you agree there's a logistical issue? And that is that if you try to consult with 10,000 people, you obviously can't put them all in a room and have a conversation. So you try to. You try to aggregate that and that's effectively where the stakeholder component comes from. But you've acknowledged that in fact, I think I'm hearing, that those stakeholders might be very aware of the questions they want to bring, but they don't necessarily refresh with the community.
They don't necessarily reflect the everyday struggle.
Okay. And that's kind of where you guys can step in.
Yes, yes. That's where we're trying our best to step in. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here. Awesome.
councillors, I don't think we have our next submitter. So I propose that we adjourn the meeting for about probably five or six minutes. Don't go too far away, please. So I'll move that. Seconded councillor Vandevoss. All in favour? Gary.